Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a short one of the mics. All right. Did I pull it? Martha's?
Martha's.
Get it in a position like Martha and say...
Speech.
Is it okay?
I think it would go down a little bit more. Okay.
Oh, it has to be down here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I counsel before we do go into our consent agenda, are there any additions or changes to this evening's agenda?
Can I give a RagBri report?
Okay. Michael, RagBri report under committee reports. Then counsel will move to our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from the September 9th meeting, approval of the August finance report. We have a resolution for the employment of four in the park and recreation department. We have approval of a liquor license for Paradise Pizza and approval of claims of the amount of $265,538.12.
I have a question.
Sure, Connie.
In the finance report, since we've had such a focus on negative balances and we have three here, just want to quickly go over those. I don't have it in front of me, but I know the lost... Thank you. The lost... No, I'm sorry. The insurance fund is because that... Those monies come in monthly from property taxes. And so that's going to be a catch-up. Okay. Same thing with lost. We pay out all the requests usually in July and the money has to come in through the rest of the year.
Which we receive quarterly.
Yes. The solid waste has been in the negative for many, many years and that's why we've been... It's catching up. But yeah. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Connie. And actually, the progress we've made on the solid waste fund is significant. So that's... I don't know what point we would project to be breaking even or retaining some balance in that.
Probably a year.
Okay.
Should be a catch-up or maybe less.
Either in a year or we could make a transfer from the general fund once we have vested within it, which we are almost to the end of that process. We have one more meeting, I think, with Piper Jaffray and we should be prepared to do that if it would be the rule of counsel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Boyer?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes, abstaining from the minutes.
Okay. We have no request to address the counsel this evening, so we'll move on to our resolutions and action items. We have the first reading this evening of Vacating the Alley to Shouse Borges. We looked at this last time, counsel. I think everyone's familiar with the property that's going to be vacated. So this will be our first reading. We'll start by opening up a public hearing, see if there's any public comment. Not seeing any, we'll declare the public hearing closed and move on then to approval of the ordinance from the first to the second reading.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to similar piece of business and that is Vacating the Alley to the First United Methodist Church. That's the east-west alley at the west one-half block between lots five, six, four, and three. So we'll proceed then with opening the public hearing on the vacation of that lot, of that alley. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing and ask for approval. Kevin, did you have a comment?
Your honor, if I may, I would request a waiving of the readings on this one. Understand that the church would like to pave that alley and of course, we're running short on time on a construction level. The alley, when we get done with that before the freeze, might be an important aspect of the work.
Okay. Counsel, is there a desire to suspend the rolls on the three readings?
Or maybe not.
We don't see any takers on this, so we'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve.
I think at least two of us understand the concrete can be poured in cold weather and it's almost better to do it at a time.
I think it would be good to get it through one reading and then...
I don't know. That's up to...
It's up to the contractor.
I understand.
Counsel, so entertain a motion then to pass from the first to the second reading this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie, second by Hammuss. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Jeez. Just saying, that's a long day.
Next, counsel now... Kevin, can you explain this?
I just came from Omaha.
We have this on here. Is this on the conveyance of real estate?
Yes. That would be...
Isn't that going to be done after we pass our ordinances?
That's right. That's right. That needs to be done. Both those actions on both of these need to be done following. They are listed on this agenda, but they should be done following. I would request that we table it.
Okay. So we'll table those two resolutions until we finish the public hearing process on the ordinances for both of those properties. And then we'll move down to a tax abatement application for 1210 Cody Circle. I think you all have a copy of that, counsel. This is new home construction. Kevin, is there anything else that you mentioned about this? This is Craig and Jane Kirchner.
Other than the fact that it is a typical application and we are in support.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hammuss, second by Revolinsky to approve the application. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Thank you. Miss Counsel, we have three agreements this evening regarding some of the work that we're going to be doing for appraisal and land services. And we've asked John Myers if he would come up and give us some... A synopsis of these, please, John?
Thank you, your honor. As you stated, there are three agreements before you tonight that are all related to the Step One Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. The first is for the initial appraisal services that will be required. It's a... As my cover letter states, it's on a unit cost basis. We actually don't know how many appraisals we're going to do at this point in time. We're thinking it could be as many as five or six. It could be as many as three or four. Or as few as three or four. At any rate, those... It would be for the appraisals for property that are more than $10,000 in value. Less than that, they can be done by the land services contractor and they are included in that agreement. So the first for the direct appraisals is Cook Appraisals of Iowa City. That's my understanding that they were involved with the airport project and have worked in Fairfield before. So... They were actually... Okay. I guess the second one is commercial appraisals of Iowa and those are the review appraisals. Those are required under the federal land acquisition requirements. You have to do an appraisal and then have it reviewed by a second independent appraiser to make sure that it's in order and reasonable.
So there isn't a delineation of work that they're doing per... On a property basis, they'll be reviewing the same properties?
That's right. They use the same documents. They review it to make sure that the calculations have been done in a reasonable manner. It's kind of a bit of a belt and suspenders, but it's what is required by the federal guidelines or federal requirements. The third is the agreement for JCG Land Services of Nevada, Iowa, and they will be actually doing the onsite negotiation for everything ranging from geotechnical boring rights to acquiring the easements and the property, doing the actual negotiations with them.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any questions?
You have a question. And I feel better now that you... That the appraisal... The number of appraisals looks like it's going to be small. Because I was actually really surprised when it said 3,000 per appraisal. And I'm... Because I'm thinking, what's different? I mean, what's the process that they have to go through than somebody going by and their house or refinancing the house and getting appraisal from your local appraiser?
Well, number one, these are independent fee appraisers. They're not real estate agents giving value opinions. And that's a considerable difference. The second is that they have to comply to the U.S. standards for appraisals in private practice, I think it is. US PAP, I believe, is the acronym. And it is an involved process. And it has to be done... And actually, there are two appraisals with each one. It's a before-taking and an after-taking measure of damages. So they're having to do many of the things in a dual fashion. It's not simply a land value. It's a before and after damages that are done for the easements. Obviously, if it's a total acquisition, it's just one. Actually, we just got done doing some appraisals a little bit farther away from Des Moines and Iowa City in Centerville with commercial appraisers and they got five grand apiece for them. So... And they were agricultural taking, similar to what we're talking about here. It's... They produce a book that's about 150 pages.
And short regulatory guidelines make this a little bit more difficult than your typical private industry residential appraisal service.
Actually, we feel it... We felt it was a pretty reasonable price for the initial appraisals. The review appraisers is generally about half of that, so we're in the ballpark with that.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do, John, maybe you can help do this and Kevin, is for the counsel to put this in context for where we are in the process of some of these pieces of land that could potentially be taken and how that decision is going to be made and...
Well, we know at... In the area of the wastewater treatment plant, we're going to have... Well, we're still evaluating, as you know, the specific sites, but we're looking at the cost impacts that are going to be affecting the decision process. So there's probably at least three, possibly four parcels around the treatment plant that we're going to want to get full appraisals on because they probably will be total takings. Then we have two major sanitary sewer easements, one with the Congers and then the Holt family or the Holt Property North that are probably going to be in the range that are going to require total appraisals as well. That would be kind of the worst-case scenario. There are other easements up as we get toward Lambs and Woods, but those are, we hope, much smaller. It will be less than the $10,000 number.
Right.
Assuming the contract gets approved tonight, we'll actually be putting together an assignment to discuss with Kevin and the committee of how many we want to do. And we had a brief staffing last week and talked about it, but initially, we're thinking that there's probably at least two that we want to get moving on immediately. Because it's... To get appraisal, review appraisal done, we're talking about probably about 60 days. And time is moving very, very fastly, quickly here.
That is true. And we... During that meeting, we were talking... We were setting a date for early December, which we'll be letting out soon for another public forum-type meeting where we'll be fleshing out the ins and outs of these sites and how... Basically, letting folks join in as to how we... What our logic was for our proposition to counsel, our recommendation. So everybody will kind of get to see that sausage being made at that meeting. So it should be an interesting meeting. We will be inviting the public. It'll be a similar forum-type situation. We'll have maps laid out showing the different sites. I believe there are about five different potential sites that we looked at and we're vetting again. So we'll be doing that in that meeting as well. Was it December 3rd, I think, is what we decided on?
First week of December.
Yeah. So...
Okay. Thank you, John. Counsel, so we'll take these one at a time. Entertain a motion then to approve the agreement with Cook Appraisers for the initial appraisal recommendation.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any questions? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Excuse me. Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, will be the approval of the agreement with Commercial Appraisers of Iowa. And again, as John Myers described to us, this will be a review process, but also part of the full appraisal process.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hammuss, second by Boyer. Any discussion? Not... Please call the roll.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the final agreement will be with JCG Land Services and this entity will be doing some of the negotiating as it is needed with property owners going forward. Moved by Boyer?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any discussion? Not... Please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, counsel. Next, we have another contract to approve and this is an agreement with Newman Munson PC, who we believe we've already given authorization, Kevin, to use as the architect and construction manager for the recreation center. But we've just received the agreement. You'd like counsel approval for signing that agreement.
Indeed, we would, your honor. I guess the meat and potatoes of this agreement would be that the fee compensation for the company would be 6.5% of the initial construction cost if the cost of the work is 4.5 million or more plus a lump sum of 7,500 for reimbursable expenses or 7% of the initial construction of the cost of the work was less than 4.5 million plus that same lump sum for those reimbursable expenses, which of course, would include travel and other inclusions.
Okay. And we have been fully engaged with them, so this is just something we're going to continue with. We'll have a report on that a little bit later in closed session, but entertain a motion to approve the agreement with Newman Munson.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, will move to our third and final reading for the wastewater fee rate increase. And we have two amendments. Ordinance 1104, which is the actual fee that each user will be charged $17.82 and that the users shall also pay for operation and maintenance replacements and debt retirement at the rate of .0588 cents per cubic foot of water. So open the public hearing at this time to ask if there's any public comment on this. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any feedback or anything you'd like to add?
I have one comment. At the first reading, I had asked for that per cubic foot of water number be modified to .059 and it's not. It... I had asked for it to be amended and it was approved as amended on the first reading. It didn't show up on the second and it's not here on the third. So I would like it to reflect that.
Okay. I'm sure we'll get that change and what's your... Yeah. What's your... You have to approve the amount that was amended in the first reading, so...
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll take that as a motion to approve as amended. Okay. Thank you, Darren. Is there a second? Second by Hammuss. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have ordinance 1105. Open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask what your wishes are for the third and final reading here.
Would like to move it from the... Through the final reading.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Boyer. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Thank you, counsel. So we'll move down then to our committee reports. Councilman Hallie?
Sure. RagBri has been over for a while, as you all know, but we promised early on that if the event itself profited, that we would take the profits and give them back to the community in the form of grants to any nonprofit organization who asked and give special priority to organizations that helped make the event successful. We received 56 separate applications, requests for about $100,000. We didn't have $100,000. So we were able to fulfill or partially fulfill the grant request for 23 organizations. And last Saturday night, at the Live on the Square event, we passed out the checks and we had a lot of people very happy. And it just felt really good to see the real impact of that event. There's a reason we would host something. It's not just to throw a big party and have a lot of fun, though it was a lot of fun. It's also about economic impact. So that was a very real tangible benefit to our community and the projects range from all sorts of wonderful things that we actually should see physically upgrades to our community. We also received a check from RagBri, the organization itself, the central organization. If the event profits, they profit share with the overnight stay communities. That will go into what we're calling the Legacy Project. Again, upgrades to our city, but we wanted these to be extremely tangible, something you could point at and say, "Fear for RagBri 2013 paid for that." So those are... We'll announce those later. Still kind of deciding on that, but...
I'm thinking of porta potty.
Right in front of...
I hate to be a kind of a wet blanket on this, but the city did put in $10,000. I mean, maybe that could reimburse a general fund for part of our contribution.
Well, the city will get its $10,000, most likely in the form of lost. We don't have those numbers yet, Joy?
No.
No?
I don't think we're ever going to get them.
Well, the spending that happened on that day went into our local option sales tax and probably...
There are a lot of city organizations that benefited, received grant money.
Yeah, actually.
So I mean, there are departments that did receive...
And the departments that helped out. We also asked them to at least partially cover the time and employees, wastewater, streets, park and rec, so...
Well, and then there's... And there are the intangibles that, you know, being a whole city really represents as well and, you know, the city support that went into that. It's just, you know, the tourism benefits that will follow on and the goodwill and those kinds of things It's just, you know, the tourism benefits that will follow on and the goodwill and those kinds of things are, I think, are good investments.
I would add to that, Your Honor, that on the square, there are four quadrants, of course, and each one of those four quadrants has about four different power outlets. And during Christmas, that's where the lights were plugged in and everything. Those boxes, they're in the ground and we have caps made that have electrical outlets on the other side of those. I think the originals were from maybe 1942. And we had to displace a couple of rat families when we brought those out. And, you know, we made... we got all new boxes of those and they're all built according to electrical code, current electrical code 2009. And also, once again, Paul Glossip graciously allowed the city to have a facade easement on his building that includes three different 200 amp boxes. So in the future, and that's permanent, so in the future, any event held uptown, whether it be art walk or otherwise, we do plan on going under the street eventually. Right now, you would have to take a power outlet across the street, say, in a piece of metal conduit so that you could roll over it. But in the future, we do plan on going underneath the street with that, a permanent access on the other side. So that's one of those intangibles. I think it was an incredible benefit. The overall value of those improvements certainly reach into the thousands, I would say, at or slightly above $10,000.
We paid for that in addition to the $10,000.
That was included in... parts of that were included in the RagBri budget as well. We actually didn't pay for all that. We paid for the facade easement cost to Paul Glossip, which was a very appreciable... We appreciate the number, it's a very low number, I should say, for what it costs us, I think $1,500 for that facade easement, which is in perpetuity. Other than that, though, the RagBri budget picked up a large amount of those costs and we do appreciate that.
Yeah, and some of the organizations that received grants were Park and Rec Foundation, the Fire Department, Police Reserve. So those are all city organizations as well. So the city got its money's worth and then some. So I'll report one more time on this when we have the Legacy Project all hammered out.
Okay, great. Well, I hope we get a vote. All right, then this will give us a good segue then to our next report, which is by our CBB Director, Russen Lippincott. And they had a little bit to do with the RagBri event also.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, it's fun to be back in front of you. It's been a while. This is always a fun opportunity for us, for me, to come and talk about what tourism does for the community. I just want to start with a little introduction. I hope you read it. I'm just going to touch on some high points. The organization, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, started in 2004. It is funded from hotel motel tax and additional revenues that we generate. So about 90% of our budget is generated from hotel motel tax and grants, event income. It makes up the other 10%. It's two member staff. Terry Baker and I work to promote Fairfield. And that's really what we are doing on a daily basis is to engage in activities that promote economic development in Fairfield, Jefferson County. Obviously, we want to increase the visitor volume and the money that's spent in our community. And that's through the attractions, whether it be our special events. And we also partner with the community leaders to put on events. You know, we're that leadership, we're that marketing arm for a lot of things that are Fairfield. But some of the things I want to point out, which I work very closely with Tracy Vance with the Economic Development Association, but tourism is really vital to economic development. Right now, the big thing in economic development is jobs. And the state commissions a report for all the counties in Iowa. And they report that 300 people are directly employed in Jefferson County to the tourism industry. It's a $38 million industry, but more important, the next figure that I'm going to say, which is that's a 14.2% increase over last year. And it's nine points higher than the statewide average. So what does that mean? Fairfield's on the trend up and we're faster, we're going faster than the other 98 counties. And as I mentioned, tourism is economic development, so is, you know, the recreational amenities, so are the arts and culture. So it's more than bricks and mortar, big factories. I mean, this is the economic development, the new age, and tourism plays a major role in that. Just some other figures. The graph that shows the hotel motel tax revenue, you can see that it increased quite a bit from our fiscal year 12 to fiscal year 13. It was over a 12% increase. So again, those figures are there saying, people are coming to town, more people are coming, more money is getting pumped into town in our community, whether it be at our lodging, our food service, entertainment, our gas stations. You know, it's all part of that tourism mix. Our retail stores on the square and along Burlington Avenue. So I just want you to take away on the revenue side, that it's more, tourism is more than people just staying in the hotels. I mean, that money is reinvested with the bureau, but it's the ancillary dollars that come in because of tourism that helps us all. Couple of things I want to highlight on the marketing section. This year, we put forth our app and it's a digital strategy that really embraces your smartphone. As you know, I'm sure many of you have smartphones and we were the first bureau, you know, in our size in the state of Iowa to step forward and say, "We believe in this digital strategy. We want to reach that demographic. We want to get the people that... that's how they get their information. That's where we want to be." Obviously, the Smithsonian magazine helped us quite a bit.
Russen?
Yes?
Can you tell us how you're using the app at this point? Are you using push notifications for events and...
Absolutely. We're, you know, we're still trying to figure out the push notifications, which basically is an alert that says, "Hey, you've received a message from the Convention and Visitors Bureau." We want it to be a resource, so it's the new age of finding a place to stay or finding a place to eat or finding a place to get your hair cut. We want to be that all-in-one information source, but we also want to be that event reminder. We want to use it to attract people to the events. And right now, it's more of a local thing. We announced it right before RagBri, so we had quite a few writers that downloaded it. Some of them have fallen off, but many of the locals are using it. And, you know, when you look at Iowa, many people travel to visit family and friends. So again, it all starts, if the people that live in Fairfield and Jefferson County are excited about what we have to do here and get the information, they're more likely to tell their friends and family, which they come and visit, so. But we're looking at different ways. I mean, it's a local company that we're working with, so it's easy to have that relationship on ways to push notification or different ways to use it. I mean, it's pretty new and for an organization our size, you know, the opportunities, every day is different. Every day is something different that we're trying with it.
Great, thank you.
What's that?
Thanks.
Oh, you're welcome. So in your sheet, in your sheet or in your packet, there's a sheet that talks about the app. So maybe after the meeting, y'all can download the app and stay up on it. Michael referenced RagBri. You know, the bureau was really the point organization from the beginning, back in January when the announcement was made and we started to put the committee together. So, I mean, that, you can imagine the amount of time that was spent there. But, you know, from the grant program, excuse me, to the projects that we're funding, the Legacy, I mean, RagBri was good for Fairfield.
And you know what, Russen, I think I've said this more than once when we've talked about the success of the event, is that the difference between when we hosted this last in 1997 and this year was essentially the CBB as, you know, to have someplace that could really be a central point where we knew that every day someone would be focusing on that.
Sure. And I can't underestimate the value of the committees. I mean, over 100 volunteers, a strategic or executive committee that met about every week, you know, for four or five months. It was a lot of time and effort put in and we couldn't have done it without, obviously, the city support and volunteer support. So thank you. I also want to talk about the special projects. We do a couple of different things every year. One thing was that we created a program to educate and train our local residents, our business owners, our volunteers, because that's the front lines of tourism. So we had a... it was a whole day activity. We had a speaker come in. It was very hands-on oriented. So, Michael, you want to say anything about that? I think you participated.
Actually, I didn't make it.
Oh, you didn't? I'm sorry.
I will say, well, years ago, before I was a council member, I was with the Visitors Bureau and we talked about it. So I was really happy to see it finally happen because it's basically hospitality training, which we're pretty hospitable. We had a good time. A pretty hospitable group here in Fairfield, but there is a little bit of training that goes into becoming a real tourism destination.
Good cover, thank you.
I think they call it internal marketing, right?
I can say, though, being a newbie, that when I did get the job here, almost everyone to the T that I talked to about Fairfield, that's the one thing that everybody talked about. And we have outstanding industry in Fairfield that ranges, you know, runs the gamut. But that's the one thing that everybody talked about, was that we were the place to go, to have fun in Iowa. One of those key places that wasn't in the northwest or northeast section of the state. So I found that to be kind of refreshing. Even after getting here, of course, you see the evidence of it in all our grand events, art walk and others. But, yeah, I felt that when I got here and I heard it before I did, so.
And the participants all left with a binder, so, you know, it's all things Fairfield in a binder. So it's something that I hope we can continue. You know, we have partnered with the county supervisors as well for some funding. And in addition to the Destination Fairfield project, they funded our Mazdan Barnes Audio Tours project. Basically, we created a walking audio tour, MP3, that you put headphones on and hear the history of the Mazdan Barnes. The last thing I'll talk about is our grant program. We take monies dedicated, derived from the hotel motel tax and put them into a grant program. And every year, we fund organizations that bring people to town. And you'll see the list in the annual report, but it's tourism dollars that come in that go right to the people of Fairfield.
Is that the complete list, Russen?
It is the complete list for this calendar year.
Well, this is great. How many of these did you print?
Well, they just got off the printer today at 4:00.
Okay.
So...
Is this something we're going to share?
I quickly put it together.
Is this, I mean, is this something we're going to share outside of...
Absolutely, yes. It will be on our website.
Yeah, it's very nicely done.
TravelFairfield.com.
Good. Great, well, thanks for that report, Russen, no doubt, all positive. Any questions or accolades for Russen before he leaves?
Good job.
Good job, Russen.
Excellent.
Thanks so much. All right, council, then. Next, we'll move to a support for request. And this, you may have noticed, a small event that we had back in June called Fair Fest, which really was not a small event, was really quite remarkable, a three-day, four-day music festival. And the founder of it, Rick Sarnat, is here this evening. And then, Rick, are you going to speak with us? Or Kevin, are you going to speak to the council on his behalf?
Yes, I think he is going to speak to council for a second. I did want to say that, of course, we are going to go through, you know, the grander process here with subcommittees as we normally would for events. And I think there's going to be material presented by the group. But we thought it'd be a good idea to come in tonight just to have a briefing of that because we do feel like this is going to be one of the more larger events that we have during the... one of our key events, if not the key event during the year, outside of, you know, the art walk. But I'll let others speak about it.
Hello. My name's Erica Richards. I know many of you personally and you may remember me from my years covering the council for the newspaper. Now I'm hurting musicians, so that's my new life. But I wanted to come and it's been a few months, but things have settled and we've been able to really assess what we've done, what we did well, what we'd like to do better next year. And I'm here tonight with my partner, Dr. Sarnat. He is a physician. He's lived here about 10 years now and he was really kind of the motor and the inspiration behind Fair Fest. And it's been an idea that we've all had for years, but he really helped us all become organized, along with James Moore and Roland Wells. So that's kind of the core group and Chris Johnson were sort of the ones that really moved us forward. Our initial goal in putting this together last year was just to see if we could even do it. We had such a huge, grand idea of what we wanted it to look like, so we kept our goals very simple. And our goals were, we just wanted to deliver a signature multi-day, multi-venue event that could entice visitors from out of town and all over the Midwest eventually. And within that, we had a few simple markers of success in mind. We wanted to be sure our visiting musicians were happy, they were made to feel welcome, and we also wanted to create good working relationships with the city and the county. And that was really important for us. And to make sure that things got cleaned up properly and, you know, everybody could see that we were really, you know, had good intention behind making this a successful event. We were able to achieve near-perfect execution of stage, sound, artist satisfaction, hospitality, suites, artist hotel accommodations, general safety, toilet hygiene, evacuation preparedness, overnight security. Did all that for several days. Merchandise and food vendor satisfaction. We had a well-attended sustainability track on the inside of the Sondheim that was functioning concurrently with our big outdoor stage at the same time. Without exception, the feedback from the vendors and the musicians was that they were just blown away by what we did. They felt so welcome, they couldn't wait to come back, they didn't want to leave. The vendors couldn't believe that this was our inaugural event. They had seen levels of organization in other events. This looked to them like a 10-year process, you know, that we had really been engaging for quite a while. And Russen was just telling me that the CBB is getting requests from musicians from all over the Midwest asking to participate next year. So we'll have a programming committee. We'll be deciding, of course, all the bands from last year want to come back. And so, you know, we're going to have to hopefully have a few of them come back, but, you know, we want to have a different offering for next year. So some will have to be disappointed, which is kind of a good problem to have, I guess. But in any case, our first year, we had more days, more bands, 40 bands, greater variety and high-quality acts on par with the long-running Iowa City Jazz Festival. A full-time national vendor told us we couldn't believe Fair Fest was an inaugural event. Russen was just incredibly excited about how the whole thing was organized and how the relationship between the outdoor stage and the Arts and Convention Center partnered. We got a lot of great feedback from the people who did attend. We estimated between 6,000 and 8,000 people attended over the four days. Next year, in the next three to five years, we'd like to track 10,000 to 12,000. And that's sort of what gets us into what we'd like to do better for next year. So this year, we had just, we were just sort of the bare minimum. We wanted to get it done. Next year, we really plan on putting together a very long-term, committed public relations and marketing campaign that will go throughout the Midwest. We're starting now. We're working with Russen and the CBB and I will also have other people help me as well. We'll have a bigger budget for that. We, you know, we want to get a bigger buy-in from our local community. And in ways to do that, we will have more in-depth marketing with regards to merchandise, like RagBri. You know, believe me, we were all out at RagBri taking notes and seeing how we could benefit from, you know, that big organization. What we'd like to do differently is we'll have the same stage, but we won't use it until after 5:00 because of the heat. I think that that kept a lot of people away. It was very warm during those days. But during the day, we also had performances on the inside, so people really appreciated being able to go inside and be entertained and get cooled off. So we'll continue to do that. We're going to partner with the farmer's market and hopefully that they will extend their farmer's market over several days so that there'll be the opportunity for our local farmer's market merchants to benefit from the crowds that we can bring in. We're going to have a kids' corner, we're going to have games, we're going to have clinics for guitar-playing, drumming, games. You know, we're really going to expand on families being able to feel comfortable bringing their children. We have big plans. So I've also contacted all of the choir and music directors and all of the music and all the school districts in the southeast Iowa area. We'd like to create a youth stage. And that would be a process over the course of a year where the music and choir directors would choose, they would kind of be in charge of the project on their own, and they would choose who they would like to see on that stage. I mean, just here in Fairfield, we have an incredible young male choir at the high school. And if you guys have never heard this choir, it's amazing. And nobody ever hears them except for the parents, which is fine, but we would really like a lot of people to hear this choir. They're incredible. The jazz band is incredible, so we'd really like to be sure that a lot of people get heard as we attract more people. We're also going to hopefully add a gospel track for Sunday morning, for church, Sunday morning, inside at Sondheim. And in terms of our sustainability track, we would like to be project-oriented. For instance, we would take suggestions as to how we could actually, instead of bringing people together and just discussing something very abstract, we'd like to give them an actual problem to solve so that over the course of a couple of days, if there's, you know, I know somebody had written to the editor about some water issues going on in the city or some conservation issue, something like that, we could give our committees to really, at the end, have a solution to submit to the city. So that's something that we really like to see. So we have a lot of ideas for next year. We're very ambitious for Fair Fest 2014. And I think that at this point, I'm going to hand this over to Rick.
Thank you.
My part's over. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Unlike Erica, this is my first time here, so hello, y'all. I've not been in the council before. You know, I'm going to be mercifully short, brief, and the good news is we're not asking anyone to commit to any dollar amounts tonight or any investment by the council. We're just putting this all in front of you to get you to start thinking about the grand vision. What's the real goal? What are we trying to achieve? And what are our donors trying to achieve? More importantly, what's the business plan? You know, luckily, we've been talking about RagBri all night and the business plan is very simple. Just look at RagBri. My numbers may be wrong, but what I heard is the, you know, city invested $10,000. You've got $15,000 back in beer revenue. And of course, RagBri filled up hotels, restaurants, people bought goods and services. I don't know if those numbers are accurate or not, that's what I was told. You know, that's great. The only problem is, as was mentioned, is RagBri is sort of a gypsy bicycling tour that comes through once every couple decades. It's not owned by the city. It doesn't really brand the city. I doubt it actually convinces anyone to move here or bring their families or businesses here. Sure, they get a taste of Fairfield. The advantage of Fair Fest, and by the way, before I leave that, so what's the return on investment if the 10 and 15 is right? You get one and a half times your money back, just in beer and then all the other ancillary, sales tax and the rest. If you look at Fair Fest, number one, Fair Fest is for Fairfield. It's going to be here every year. If the donors and the community and everybody rises up around their vision, this will be endowed to perpetuity. And they've committed to, you know, come in with some seed money of every year in the budget to the tune of, you know, $35,000, $40,000, something in that range. Now, this year, the budget for Fair Fest was $85,000. We raised $70,000 of hard funds and we had about $15,000 of goods and services from the business community, which was a huge outpouring and we were really happy and proud of that. We didn't even ask the private sector yet because we wanted to show proof of concept. I think we've done that. We didn't ask the council or the county for anything, although you all were very helpful with the things we did request. The county was very helpful and we thank you very much. But the vision for the future is this. If you look at the actual return from Fair Fest, of that $85,000, approximately half that money goes to stay in Fairfield. It goes to pay the sound engineers, it goes to pay the PR, it goes to pay the printing, it goes to pay people for all the goods and services that we need to even create Fair Fest. The only money that left Fairfield goes to the Sound and Stage Company from Cedar Rapids and goes to the outside musicians from outside Fair Fest. We too filled all the hotels. I know, because I was in charge of booking every room for every musician and a lot of the visiting folks. We had people visiting from California to New York, to Milwaukee, to Chicago, to Colorado. And to a person, everyone is coming back. We have created a mini-industry, which will only grow every year. You know, I can't show you sales tax reports from hotels or food or this or that because A, they're not out yet and B, I'm not sure they're aggregated to show you in a year-to-date way, but, you know, you all can do your due diligence on that. But the bottom line is 50% of what we raised stayed here, and I think that's big. And just as an anecdote, the whole purpose of this is really to showcase the best that Fairfield has to offer. Music, food, sustainability practices, which we all are very proud of, you know, and trying to integrate as a city. And the idea is to get people to bring their families, their businesses. If we only look at one example, I think a very strategic thing that just happened in our city is that the movie theater is opening up again. And that happened without any support, you know, financially from the council or the county. How did that happen? I do not believe it's coincidence that the two younger people that are going to be running that venue with Chris Johnson, both on the food side and on the operation side, the cinemat... venue with Chris Johnson, both on the food side and on the operations side, the cinematographer, are people that were at Fair Fest the entire time. They loved Fair Fest. In fact, the gentleman who's taking over the food concessions at the new theater was one of our happiest vendors, because he sold about 2,000 tacos over four days, two, four days. I have to believe, and I'm not taking scientific causality or credit, but I think the correlation is there. That's how you attract people to come, spend their time, energy, and money in Fairfield, when both of these guys live in Des Moines. So, a few things that would be helpful. Using RagBri is our economic model. Where do you make a lot of money in RagBri? Beer sales. What would help Fairfield both draw people and raise more revenue? Beer sales. So, I realize we have to come back with a schematic, just like we did last year to the subcommittees on planning, show you where the beer tent would be and all that. It also pays for officers off-duty, because we would have to have an officer manning that little area for the entire time we're selling beer. But that's something that if the Council could approve, it allows us then to go out and start looking for sponsors, like New Belgium, hopefully, or some other local brewery for the stage to help support this. That would be one request. The second is getting the word out, just like you had big banners over Highway 34 for RagBri. You know, I spent a lot of time in Palm Springs. I watched it from the International Film Festival, being a little teeny thing, just like this is, to being an international event. What do they do? They fly banners over the highway for a month leading into it. It would be nice to get approval, to have a banner, both on Highway 1, sitting on the bridge, and over 34, similar to RagBri, maybe starting June 1st every year, because this is going to be the third weekend of June every year. We can't get into the fourth. That's the County Fair. We can't get into the second. That's Italian Fest. There was a third thing. Oh, I can't even remember. Do you remember?
It was in this.
Oh, it was, anyways. And finally, you know, I did send an email around to everybody. There will be a financial request at some point, but I just want you to think about all this for now. We'll come back to you at the planning committee stage, and hopefully you'll see fit to help fund this, because I think this will be the major event in Fairfield for tourism, to support everything you're all doing and what Russon is doing. Happy to answer any questions, if folks have some.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions, Counsel?
Just one comment. Some of your comparisons with RagBri, although I appreciate the intention, aren't entirely accurate, and all that information is completely available, if you want it, of how the budget works.
Sure.
There are revenue streams besides the beverage garden. We had vendor fees, and we had t-shirt sales, and we had sponsorships. So, it's not all about, just to relieve Johns. It's not all about the beer sale. I could share that with you if you'd like.
Sure.
Because it was the first year, and it was unknown, we asked vendors to just give us a percentage of their sales, or to donate what they felt was fair.
They'll be paying for us as well. But again, because it's smaller and it's growing, it's not a much-swap scale. And, you know, we're allowing all the local businesses just to put tables out in front of their businesses on the sidewalk, you know, probably with no vendor fee, because they've already paid for the sidewalks, so to speak.
Although, we have a vendor fee, but we can go over those details with you on that.
Exactly.
But thank you very much for basically introducing us to the founders of the event, and it is very exciting that there is a long-term commitment to this that I think is backed up by the scale of the event that you put on and the success that you described. I think we would all agree. So, we look forward to the partnerships, and we'll see you in January. We're looking at financial requests, and certainly, all of those other areas, we'll be more than happy to work with you on.
Thank you.
Great.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Counsel, is there any other business while we're in open session? If not, at this portion, we will, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. We are having a closed-session discussion on real estate as per IO Code Section 21.5 LJ.
All right, move to go into closed session.
Moved by Reverend Skey.
Your Honor.
Seconded by Hamilton.